Good evening, I'll call to order the Arvada City Council meeting for July 15th, 2019. Call upon Councilmember Bob Pfeifer.
Thank you, Mayor. Will you all join me in a moment of reflection? Thank you, and I see we do have a scout in the audience, so if you wouldn't mind coming to the podium and leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and then afterwards tell us why you're here and what troop you're with and what merit badges you're working on.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and moral. Hi, my name is Margot Dempsey, and I'm an incoming eighth grader at the Manning School in Golden. I'm a scout in troop 2176, and I'm here tonight to work on the citizenship in the community and communications merit badges.
Well, thanks for being here.
Yeah.
Kristen Rush, if you'll do the roll call.
Mayor Williams.
Here.
Mayor Protem Marriott.
Here.
Councilmember Pfeifer.
Here.
Councilmember Ford.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember McGough.
Here.
Councilmember Miller.
Mr. Marriott.
Yeah, I'd like to move that we excuse Councilmember Miller from tonight's meeting.
Motion to excuse Dot Miller. All votes are cast. That passes six to zero. Ms. Miller advised us that she would be out of town for tonight's meeting. Next, we have the minutes of June 17th, 2019. Any changes or corrections? Seeing none, they will stand as presented. Next, we have some recognitions. I'll call upon Councilmember Nancy Ford to lead us off.
I'd like to invite Lauren Guo to the podium. Recently, Lauren Guo made her second trip to the Scripps National Spelling Bee in Maryland. She was one of 15 Colorado students there. As she did last year, Lauren made it to the finals, where she was one of two Colorado representatives still in the competition. She represents Wayne Carl Middle School. And Lauren, in recognition of your participation in the 2018 and 2019 Scripps National Spelling Bee as a qualifier and finalist, tonight we're presenting you with a certificate of recognition that is signed by the mayor and all of city council.
Thank you.
And if you've got family members that'd like to get some pictures or anything, feel free to get down to a good spot to do that.
My name is Lauren Guo. This year, I graduated from Wayne Carl Middle School. I will attend Ralston Valley High School this coming school year. First of all, I want to thank the Arvada City Council for their recognition of my performance in the Scripps National Spelling Bee. It is a great honor to receive this award. I also want to thank the Jefferson County School District and Wayne Carl Middle School for supporting the spelling bee program. Without local support, I could not have represented my school and district at the national level. I hope that support for the spelling bee continues in the future so that more students may benefit from this program. For the past two years, I have studied for the spelling bee. It could be challenging, but also a lot of fun. Through this experience, I have built my knowledge of not only words, but also of other aspects of real life and academic achievement. Spelling bees have taught me how to recover from disappointment and remain calm under pressure. Most of all, however, I have learned that no amount of time spent learning is truly wasted. It may not appear to have any effect at first, but the benefit is far greater than the lack of initial results. Thank you.
We're very proud of you.
Thank you.
Next, we have a presentation of the 2018 Comprehensive Annual Finance Report and the external audit. Mr. Devon.
Yes, we're going to have our auditors from BKD present the information.
Thank you. I'm Jody Kates. I'm a managing director with BKD, and with me tonight, I have Anna Thigpen, who is also a senior manager with BKD and assisted on the audit engagement. Earlier this afternoon, we presented our audit results to the Audit Committee in much more detail than I will here tonight, but those results are very positive. One thing I would like to highlight is, last year, we had some findings that were required to formally be reported to those charged with governance. This year, we're happy to report there are no such findings, while we had some minor adjustments and some minor recommendations to management. Nothing that rose to the level of a material weakness, or significant deficiency, or material noncompliance. So excellent, excellent results. We went through some of the financial data earlier today. Everything is very positive from a financial perspective for the city. You should be very proud of the finance department that you have and the work that they do in putting together such a comprehensive document to present your financial, the financial results of the city. We have a great working relationship. They're always very open to our questions, they're very responsive to our requests, and open to our recommendations, and a lot of times have implementation in place before we ever even, even leave the field. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have about the audit, the audit process, or the financial results.
Any questions from council? Mr. Marriott.
Thank your honor. I don't have a question, I just want to make a comment. I am on the Audit Committee, and so as such have met with the auditors for a number of years now, at about this time every year, and I can't tell you how impressed I am with our city finance staff who has gone above and beyond to make sure our financial statements pass these audits, and not only pass these audits, but pass them with flying colors. And I'll mention that they have moving targets to shoot at here. You know, the government accounting standards change frequently, and so what was the format one year is not necessarily the format the next year, but yet our staff continues to be able to produce these financial statements in such a way that, that, that really works. So I want to be complimentary to them for having done that, and then also to the, to the city management team for taking actions that keep us in these, in this place where we pass these audits with flying colors. I think the citizens can take great pride and assurance in knowing that everything is as it's supposed to be when it comes to the finances with the city of Arvada. So, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Yes, Mr. McGough.
Yes, I'd just add that I've served on the Audit Committee off and on over the past several years, and I believe this is the first year that we've received the audit report, and there were no findings at all. So, in effect, there are no things that need to be addressed or corrected at this point. Additionally, I asked the question earlier today in that Audit Committee meeting about the working relationship between the outside audit team and our internal team, our staff team, and the response was that all worked very, very smoothly. Meetings were set and were conducted on time. All timelines were met, and so it's been a very good audit year. Thank you for your report, Jody Kates. It's wonderful to hear.
Great.
That our finance department is doing so well. Thank you.
Great, and it is, we have, we do have a really good working relationship, and a couple of the things that really keep us on track, both the city and BKD on track, is we're not waiting until the audit starts to start talking about these standards that, that Councilman Merritt talked about changing every year that's really keeping everybody on their toes. We'll, we'll give them a month or so break, and then we'll be on the phone with them again, talking about what we both need to be doing to get the next set of standards implemented. So, thank you very much.
Very good. Well, thank you very much. The next item is one that, in some ways, is kind of tough, because you don't hate to see these days come around, but tonight, we're recognizing City Attorney Chris Daley. And, Mr. Devon, is it okay if I lead off the discussion on this? I'm sure we've got some other council members who would like to chime in as well. And I see that we've got a former Deputy City Attorney, Mike Polk, in the audience, and a council member, Steve Urban, who may have been involved in either hiring Chris Daley, or at last least keeping him around in his early days, one of the two. So, both of you will be invited, and others can as well. For nearly a quarter century, Chris Daley has served as the City of Arvada City Attorney, providing legal counsel and guidance to dozens of elected city leaders during a period of significant growth and change to the community. Mr. Daley has announced his plans to retire on July 31st of this year, and this meeting tonight is his last city council business meeting. Mr. Daley's municipal career spans 42 years. He's spent 15 years with the Aurora City Attorney's Office before being appointed the City Attorney for Glenwood Springs, where he served for three years. He became Arvada City Attorney in May of 1995, serving as the Chief Legal Counsel for the Arvada City Council and overseeing the legal aspects of city projects. He also served as Arvada's Acting City Manager from July of 1996 to February of 1997. While reflecting on his service to the city council and to the greater Arvada community, Mr. Daley stated, "I am so grateful to have had the opportunity to serve the citizens of Arvada, the various city council members, and all current and past employees for 24 years. I could not have done this job without the help and support of so many current and past elected and appointed officials, as well as the fine employees within the City Attorney's Office." Mr. Daley is highly respected in the field of municipal law. He served as the Colorado State Chair for the International Municipal Law Association, Lawyers Association, a professional group of municipal attorneys throughout the United States and Canada. He also served as the Chair of the Colorado Municipal League's City Attorney Section. He has been recognized as Outstanding City Attorney and Outstanding Assistant City Attorney by the Colorado Municipal League. Public service is a great way to spend a career, Mr. Daley stated. He is truly honored, and has said he is truly humbled, to have gotten to know so many outstanding people who have served this magical city. Tonight, we are saluting Christopher K. Daley for his 42 years of service to municipal governments in Colorado, and more particularly, for the 24 years of service he has provided to the city of Arvada. In addition to those prepared comments, I just want to add in that, having known Chris now for many, many years, even before I was elected to city council, I view him as the epitome of a professional, of an excellent legal scholar, as someone who has given us great guidance, who has given me personally, great guidance as a mentor, as someone who was coming up through the ranks over the years, and, and someone who could, you could sit down with and have a intelligent conversation, and someone who would give you very, very good guidance, not just on a, on a legal perspective, but in personal matters as well. So, Mr. Daley, Godspeed as you move forward. You certainly deserve the right, we would, we'd just assume you weren't retiring, you deserve the right to do so, and, and we respect and thank you for your years of service. So, thank you. Mr. Jones, you're next.
So, probably knowing you the least amount of time of anyone on council, Nancy probably has known you longer, I have to tell you that I have thoroughly appreciated the last almost four years of being able to work with you. I echo all that the mayor has said, but what's interesting about Mr. Daley is that he cares about you as a person. It's not just about the job of being the city attorney. He takes great care in trying to get to know you as an individual and your family, and every Monday night, he would ask me about my boys and house football, and, and I've really appreciated that, because to me, that just kind of shows the integrity of the man. And I've appreciated the integrity that you've had and continue to have, and, and I wish you all of the very best in, in retirement, and whatever, whatever the next adventure might be for you, and I, again, appreciate the, the friendship, and hopefully that will continue for many, many, many years to come.
Mr. McGough.
Thank you. It is beyond argument that a city can exist and, or achieve excellence without the contributions of its legal staff and the leadership of the appointed city attorney. The city of Arvada has been extremely fortunate to have had Chris Daley in the position of city attorney for the past 24 years. Under his leadership, the city council has been presented for approval hundreds of resolutions, ordinances, contracts, and intergovernmental agreements. Additionally, Mr. Daley and his staff have represented the city in numerous contract and litigation negotiations. Also, I've worked closely with Mr. Daley in the development of policy documents for the city council and the management staff. Without exception, I've found the work of his office to be thoroughly researched, professional, and understandable. It's been a real honor to work closely with you, Mr. Daley, and to be a recipient of your sound legal advice over the past 12 years that I have served on council. I've always found your advice to be sound from both a legal and ethical perspective. Additionally, I've appreciated your tableside manner. You never seem to be talking down to us as council members, even when you've had the burden of explaining complex legal issues to us. You've also been, and always been, a gracious and true gentleman. I wish you the best in your retirement.
Ms. Ford.
Well, Mr. Daley, I would echo what the mayor has said. It's been an absolute blessing to have you as our city attorney. You've, you know, I feel very honored, because when I came on four years ago, almost four years ago, you offered any help, and throughout those years, you've given terrific advice. You are a man of integrity. You're very smart, very wise, and I think that you've really served this city well. And it's, you know, it, I know that it's a hard position sometimes to sit there. You may not always be in agreement with what's going on, but your, your thoughts are always for what's best for Arvada, and doing the job that you have, and, and I think that that really bodes well, and it has, you know, for the, our city. So, I, I really thank you for everything that you've done, not only for me personally, but also for this city, and I do wish you well, and I hope that whatever next step there is for you, that it's going to be great, and you're going to really enjoy it, and I know that you'll have a very profound influence, no matter where you wind up. So, thank you so much.
Mr. Pfeifer.
Instead of repeating everything, I agree with everything that my council members have been saying, but one thing, Chris, over the eight years I've known you, nine years, I look at friendship based on value system, and I believe you have, you've heard it a few times, integrity, accountability, passion, and servant leadership. And, and best of all, I can only look up to you both physically, because you are taller than I am, but I do look up to you as a mentor, because what I appreciate, what you've done for the city attorney staff, the way you mentor your employees, and it shows the steady hands and the confidence, and sometimes employees just need hope and vision, and you provided them that through your tenure, and I appreciate everything you've done for the citizens and all of us up here, and the previous councils, so I wish you well, and I'm sure I'll see you on the flip side.
Mr. Marriott.
Thank you, your honor. I will echo what my fellow council members have said, and, and say one more thing, and that's, as probably the, the least educated in legal matters of anyone who's ever sat up on this dais, Mr. Daley has been a very great help to me, and I appreciate all the time he's been able to explain complex things in a way that even I can understand, so I appreciate that very much. And I think the best reflection of your time here has been the legacy that you're leaving, and the legacy that you're leaving here is a, a legal department that's first-rate, that's well-respected, and that will go on very smoothly without you. That's the best legacy we can ever hope to leave, and, and you're leaving that, and then some, so thank you very much personally, and thank you so much for what you've done for the city.
If there's any member of the public that would like to make some comments, either in appreciation or in rebuttal, you may certainly do so.
You read my mind. So initially, I was going to come in here and do a full-fledged rebuttal, but then I figured out that you were, been doing this business for 42 years. I was thinking, 24, couldn't you hang on for another six months or five more years? But, Chris, can you imagine the number of city council members that he's gone through that's asked stupid question number 9,000? And he, with a, you know, straight face, he was able to give a very sincere and genuine answer, and not make us look bad. And, and I put myself in that same category, but, Chris, the public needs to know the thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars you've saved the city in terms of litigation matters, and the fact that this city has benefited from two great minds that's leaving us, you know, yourself and Mike Polk, in terms of legal advice, and what a dynamic duo that was to have that in our city government. And so the three words that, and they've already been mentioned, sincerity, graciousness, and just a genuine spirit about you. No one approached anybody better than you did in terms of giving people the respect they're due, even during the ugly moments. So, you know, I was there the night we, we, we made the decision to make you our city manager in lieu of a previous action we took, and, and you've hit the ground running, and, and we were the benefit of that period of time, so, I mean, you're leaving a, a hole here that's going to be hard to fill, and so as a, what I consider a personal friend, I'm just glad to have known you and gotten to know you to the extent that, that I have, and God bless you.
For the record, that's Steve Urban, former city council member. Ms. Kreitzer, you wish to address?
Hi, I'm Cindy Kreitzer, just an average citizen in Arvada, and I just want to say about Mr. Daley, that I've talked to him on several occasions about many different things, and one thing I know is that he has always been upfront and honest, and if he, if there was a problem somewhere, he just said, "That's a problem, and I'll take care of it." He never tried to make any excuses, or, or, you know, blame it on someone else, or anything like that. He's, he's an upfront guy, and I really appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Very good. Mr. Devon, would you like to make any comments?
Well, all of you have expressed the kinds of attributes that I would express. I would only add that, you know, oftentimes, it can be lonely at the top, and when it is that way, I've had a moral compass to look to, and that's Mr. Daley, and so I want to say publicly how much I've appreciated that over the last eight years.
Mr. Daley, would you like the opportunity for rebuttal?
Yes, if you don't, if you don't mind. First of all, thank you for all the very kind and gracious comments. You spoke them just as I wrote them, including, including the last-minute changes at 4:30 this afternoon, so thank you for looking at your emails. I really do appreciate that. So, there's two themes I want to talk about very briefly. One is respect, respect for the organization and gratitude, but it's going to start in an odd place, because on the 5th of this month, my son, Daniel, and his daughter Veronica, who is on the golf team at Ralston Valley, and my wife Kathy and I went and we golfed the, the nine holes over at Silo, and I'm not sure if you could call it actually golfing, what I was doing, but we had, we'd finished up, we'd had a dinner reservation previously scheduled with some friends, and Kathy and I were rushing around, and we were getting out of the golf cart, and we, we went home, and our home is probably, you know, four or five blocks from West Woods, and she realized that she had left her phone in the golf cart, and her phone, not only was her, you know, all of her personal emails and everything on the phone, but she had her credit cards as well, and she said, "I must have left it in the golf cart," and so we drove back, and as I was driving back with her, I said, "Don't worry, these are city employees, you'll get your stuff back." And sure enough, when I approached the person that cleaned out the, the golf cart, they said, "Oh, yeah, that's up, sitting up at the clubhouse," and sure enough, she, she received her, her cellphone with the credit cards. And that is an example of the type of employees that we have at the city of Arvada. And that doesn't just happen. It, it, it starts at the top. Of course, any organizational chart of the city, the top is the citizens, as the council knows. And then you've got the city council, and then you've got the city manager, and the city manager is in charge of all those employees. And in order to be a city manager, you have to be a great person, because there's so much expected of you, and I've just been so blessed to be able to work with Mr. Devon and Mr. Koshin. I, I don't know what it was like to work with me, because I don't remember that time, although I will say this, Steve, I remember when they made the decision to make me the city manager, Bob Free, who was the mayor at the time, was like, "We're going to do this," and Steve Urban was like, "This is a mistake. This is a mistake." And I would, and I would say, "Listen to Steve, listen to Steve, I don't know what I'm doing." And, and Mayor Free would say, "He's perfect for the job." So, back on course, I have such respect for this city. It was July 23rd of 1963 that the charter was adopted. Mr. McGough will remember that, from all of his work on the Charter Commission. That was 56 years ago. The moonshot was 7:20, right? So, it was 50 years ago. We're going to be celebrating that in a few days, and when I sat down and figured out how much time I've been serving the Home Rule Corporation known as the city of Arvada, it works out to about 42 or 43 percent of the time, and that's more, that's more than enough. That, that's more than enough for me, and certainly for the council. I must tell you how much I respect not only the council and the administrative staff, members of my office that are absolutely brilliant, and I acknowledge that we are all public servants. I would also indicate that I think our families are public servants as well, because they are the ones that are providing their love and support to us, and they are the ones that are backing us up. Now, Kathy wondered where I was every Monday night, so it's good that she's here tonight to see that I actually was gainfully employed. She was like, "Where is he on Monday nights?" But, so, you know, our families are as much a public servant as we are, and that's, that's the truth. And I respect each and every member that has served on the city council. Lives go on while we're in these positions. We go through health scares, our families go through health scares, and yet every Monday night, we're here working on behalf of the public, and I think that that's, that's a pretty fine thing to do. As far as gratitude goes, I am so grateful for the blessings of being put in this position originally by the council, serving both as the city manager and as the city attorney. I'm grateful for all the support I've gotten. Nobody gets through 24 years without a ton of support, not only from staff, the collaboration from all the other departments, the patience of the council with me over so many issues, where I've told you one thing, and you wanted to do something else, and you were just patient, and you, you listened to what I had to say very respectfully, but you made the decision that you had to make. The patience that the city managers have used in, in working with me, and so I am just so grateful tonight that I've had an opportunity to do this. I look forward- I look forward to the next chapter of my life, and I look forward to the next chapter of decisions that are going to be made in these chambers, because you've got some big decisions coming up, and I know that you will lead us to where we need to be. Thank you again, and God bless the city of Arvada.[620.16][620.16](Applause)[621.16][621.16](Laughter)
And we'll be recognizing Mr. Daley a little bit more fully at his retirement party on July the 30th, so stay tuned. Next, we have public comment on issues that are not on tonight's agenda. First one I have is Evan, is it Clark?
Yeah.
Good evening, Mr. Clark.
Alrighty, I'd like to thank you guys for having me here tonight. I'm part of the Jefferson County Livestock Club, Livestock Council, and my name's Evan Clark. I'm currently 15. I've been in 4-H for five years, and this year, I'm holding the president position on the Livestock Council. Every year, we go out and we have our fair from August 5th to the 12th at the Jefferson County Livestock Grounds. We show all kinds of animals, have all kinds of events, and I've shown livestock for five years. Every year, during the shows, it's running around crazy, working hard, grooming our animals. But after the show, if you win, you get a belt buckle, and it's a nice shiny, good reward that really makes all the work worth it. But the bill is kind of expensive for having all the belt buckles presented to our club. It's about $5,000 every year. So, we have to go out to the community and reach out for belt buckle sponsors. So, that's why I'm here tonight. I'm here to ask you guys for a belt buckle sponsor. I will tell you a little more about myself. Currently in 4-H, I am in livestock. I show cattle, swine, goats, and a rabbit. I'm also in shooting sports, so I shoot 22 shotgun archery and outdoor skills. For outdoor skills, I just competed at the national competition out in Nebraska, where Colorado placed eighth out of 36 other states. And that's really all about me in terms of what I do. Every day, wake up about 7:00 or 6:30, go out, feed all my animals, and then I get to come and eat breakfast. And the motto around our house is, "Animals eat first, then us." And then every night, every day, go and work out with the animals, just make them people-friendly, and just keep preparing for this event, our fair, which is coming up rather quick. And the fair is just a blast, and those, like I was saying earlier, those belt buckles really make all the hard work worth it, the years of hard work. And it just makes it all worth it, all the time, all the effort. I even pay for my own animals, all my feed. Those belt buckles are really just a token of gratitude for the hard work. And not everyone gets one, so you really have to do work pretty hard for those buckles. So, once again, I'd just like to ask you guys for a buckle sponsorship. We're also having a celebrity livestock show coming up. I know we have reached out to some of you, and we will be reaching out to some of you to get you down there to show some goats. So, that'll be fun. So, every year, we have that, and we reach out to people in the community and just bring them down. So, I'd like to thank you guys for having me. And where can I hand these sheets?
Give it to the city clerk right there. And then, is there an email or a website or anything for further information?
So, all the contact information on people to contact and who to contact is on that sheet?
Right.
Yeah. Any other questions?
That's good.
All right.
Congratulations. Uh-huh. Next, Tom Tinnison, please.
Thanks for letting me speak again this month. It's been about 45 days since I've been here, and it's the same issue that I had last month. The speeders on 57th, and of course, I live on 57th. And I want to first thank the police department for being out there a little bit more. They've been out there three times in the last month to try and help with the speeding. I don't know that it's done much good, because three hours in 45 days doesn't change the attitude on that street. And I want to talk about an incident that happened last week. I was heading to a licensing board meeting at Jeffco about 8:15 in the morning, and I was pulling out of my driveway, which is rather hard sometimes because of the speed of the people on that street. And we live about three blocks from the four-way stop at Fields. And so, as I was pulling out, thinking that I had enough distance between me and the car coming down the street, I got within two blocks of the four-way stop, and this car, of course, is right on my rear end, and decides to pass me on the double-yellow there, speeds to the four-way stop, comes to a halt, flips his finger out the window at me, and then speeds through the intersection. I, of course, broke the law that day to catch him to get a license plate number. And this is getting ridiculous on this street. I brought a video tonight and did not know that it needed to be pre-screened, but I would like to bring it back next month, and hopefully, you guys can see visually what this street is like at certain times of the day. And again, as I told you last month, I brought a radar, purchased a radar gun, and again, I clock people at 45 miles often on that street. The other thing is the inconsistencies in the speed limits around town. If I go just north of Ralston Road, Brook Drive, those up there, they're 25 miles an hour. Your street out here with the three four-way stops is 25 miles per hour. We have Lawrence School over there on Grandview, it's 25 miles an hour. Yet, between Old Wads and all the way to Independence, it's 30 miles an hour. The other issue you have is in talking with the police. The police, of course, will not do anything unless they're going over 35 miles an hour. So, we've got a de facto speed limit on our street because it is a waste of time to pick anybody up who isn't going more than five miles over the speed limit, which is disturbing. So, why do we have stop, or speed limit signs on our street? And why do we continue to have to live in a residential area where people constantly speed up and down our street? And I'd like to point out one other thing. There was a study done recently, and it deals with traffic noise. And in urban areas where speeds are between 20 and 35 miles per hour, reducing the speed by six miles per hour will reduce the traffic noise by 40 percent. And that's one thing that irritates me, is you can tell the speeders, and it happens all day and night on that street, and they have loud wheels and loud everything else. And I would ask to provide the video that I wanted to show you tonight, and I will be back at the beginning of next month, to show you the speed and the sounds that come from that road, and ask you to do something seriously about that road.
Thank you, sir. We'll look forward to seeing that.
Thanks.
Yes, I'm sorry, Mr.?
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Fiver?
Mr. Devon, is there any way we can get the enforcement kind of results of what took place?
Yes, we can provide you with some additional feedback. I did provide you with some information about that in a previous weekly memo that I sent you. We can give you an update on the enforcement.
Like all of it?
Yeah, enforcement activity.
Thank you, Mr. Devon.
Thank you. Next, Nancy Young.
The people of Lakewood have acted. In early July, at a special election, the people voted to establish an annual growth limit of 1 percent of Lakewood's housing stock, or about 680 new homes per year. The people took this matter into their own hands when their elected officials ignored their overstated concerns about excessive growth. Lakewood residents tell me that among the issues was Lakewood's exceedingly low parking requirement of less than one space per unit. They noted that not only is Lakewood becoming overcrowded, but inadequate parking for new residents is driving the parking issue into neighborhoods and businesses. Sound familiar? Some reports state that the real estate industry poured at least $470,000 into opposing this ballot initiative, while supporters, it is said, spent just a few thousand dollars, and still, they won the day. Every elected official in the metro area needs to take note of this ballot box message from Lakewood. The same issues are here in Arvada and other nearby communities. If officials do not act on citizen concerns, the citizens will take action. And when they are so incensed, as they were in Lakewood, the action they take might not have the balance needed to assure a growing, prosperous, and stable community. Many Arvadans feel that their concerns about excessive growth, including the related issues of traffic, parking, height, and so much more, are being ignored. I would urge this council to act on citizen concerns in all growth and development decisions, not just allow comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other individual like to address city council at this time? Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the public comment portion, and we'll move on to the consent agenda. We have four items on the consent agenda. The first is a resolution approving a 26th amendment to an employment agreement with Christopher K. Daley, city attorney. You may wonder why we're doing that, but it's dealing with some of his benefit issues and vacation and sick leave-type issues. Next is a resolution approving a 7th amendment to an employment agreement by and between the city of Arvada and Mark G. Devon, the city manager. Next one is a resolution authorizing an agreement by and between the city of Arvada and Empire Carpentry LLC for restoration of the .04 trolley car in an amount not to exceed approximately $428,000. Fourth item on the consent agenda is a resolution authorizing the ratification of an agreement by and between the city of Arvada and AP Mountain States LLC doing business as Adolphson and Peterson Construction for Old Town Transit Hub Cast Stone Replacement in an amount not to exceed approximately $305,000. Ms. Ford?
I move that consent items R-19-061 to R-19-064 be approved.
Motion for approval of the consent agenda. All votes are cast. That passes 6 to 0. Thank you. Next, we have ordinances on first reading. Mr. Marriott?
Thank you, Your Honor. We have six ordinances on first reading tonight, so bear with me. I will start by moving that Council Bill 19-028, an ordinance authorizing the Fourth Amendment to the 2019 operating and capital budget in the amount of $619,475, and authorizing an intergovernmental agreement by and between the state of Colorado, acting by and through the Department of Transportation, and the city of Arvada pertaining to Arvada Traffic Signal Interconnect, project number 19-TC-01, C.DOT Project AQCM040-03522670. And also move that Council Bill 19-029, an ordinance rezoning certain land within the city of Arvada, Kimbrough Heights rezoning, from city of Arvada B1 Neighborhood Business District to PUDR Planned Unit Development Residential, 10.9 dwelling units per acre, and amending the official zoning maps of the city of Arvada, Colorado, generally located at West 62nd and Carr Street. And I move that Council Bill 19-030, an ordinance authorizing an intergovernmental agreement for the creation of a regional bomb squad between Jefferson County and the city of Also move that Council Bill 19-031, an ordinance authorizing the Second Amendment and restated intergovernmental agreement for the Jefferson Parkway by and between the city of Arvada, Jefferson Center Metropolitan District Number 2, Jefferson Center Metropolitan District Number 1, the Jefferson Parkway Public Highway Authority, Cimarron Commercial LLC, and Cimarron Development Company. And then, I also move that Council Bill 19-032, an ordinance authorizing the Second Amendment to an assignment of the slope easement agreement by and among Cimarron Commercial LLC, Cimarron Development Company, Jefferson Parkway Public Highway Authority, and the city of Arvada. And finally, Council Bill 19-033, an ordinance authorizing the assignment of access control lines between the city of Arvada and Jefferson Parkway Public Highway Authority, all be approved on first reading, ordered published in full, and public hearings set for August 5th, 2019, at 6:15 PM.
Motion for approval on first reading. All votes are cast. That passes 6 to 0. Ms. Miller being an excused absence. Thank you. Next, we have a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing on Council Bill 19026, an ordinance authorizing the acquisition of certain property along Ralston Road, generally at the intersection of West 58th Avenue, for the construction of traffic signal utility and/or related improvements as part of the traffic signal rebuild, Hill Petroleum, project number 18TC01. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is a acquisition of some property necessary for right-of-way for the Signal Connect project. The project will reconstruct the traffic signal at the intersection of Ralston Road and West 58th Avenue near Hill Petroleum, with new traffic signal equipment and striping improvements on West 58th Avenue. And in order to complete this acquisition, the, in order to complete this construction, the acquisition of fee simple right-of-way for temporary construction easement is necessary. The size and extent of the right-of-way for the impacted property have been delineated through the design process, and we have a legal description assigned, included as an exhibit, and we're recommending approval of the ordinance as presented.
Good. Is there any member of the public that would like to address city council on this matter? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion, open it up for city council questions or action. Mr. Marriott?
Thank you, Your Honor. If nobody has any questions, I'd like to make a motion.
You may proceed.
I'll move that Council Bill 19-026, an ordinance authorizing the acquisition of certain property along Ralston Road, generally at the intersection of West 58th Avenue, for the construction of traffic signal utility and/or related improvements as part of the traffic signal rebuild at Hill Petroleum, project number 18-TC-01, be approved on final reading numbered 4697 and ordered published by title only. And I just want to make a quick comment, and that is, you know, we get these types of public hearings at times. These are very important in spite of there being no public comment about it or anything. These are very important infrastructure improvements that we make on a consistent basis. It's part of the smart budgeting process that the city does, and looking forward to do these things as an, in an ongoing fashion, as opposed to, you know, waiting till they're really a problem. So, for that reason, I am certainly in favor of this.
All votes are cast. That passes 6 to 0. Ms. Miller being an excused absence. Thank you. Next, I'll open the public hearing on Council Bill 19027, an ordinance authorizing the acquisition of certain property along Ralston Road, generally at the intersection of West 58th Place for the construction of traffic signal utility and/or related improvements as part of the Ralston Road and West 58th Place traffic signal rebuild phase 2, project number 16TC02, ordinance number 4698. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is very similar to the last action that you took. This is, again, for traffic signal rebuild project, funding for this project, including the proposed right-of-way acquisition is included in our financial project. As mentioned, the project will reconstruct traffic signal at the intersection of Ralston Road and West 58th Place with new traffic signal equipment and the related infrastructure for that. And in order to complete this construction, again, we need the acquisition of a permanent easement and temporary construction easement in order to complete the project, and the size and extent of that acquisition is included in the property. size and extent of that acquisition is included in the property description. So we again are recommending approval of the ordinance.
Very good. Is there any member of the public that would like to address city council on this matter? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion. Mr. Marriott?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that Council Bill 19-027, an ordinance authorizing the acquisition of certain property along Ralston Road, generally at the intersection of West 58th Place for the construction of traffic signal utility and/or related improvements as part of the Ralston Road and West 58th Place traffic signal rebuild Phase II, project number 16TC-02. Be approved on final reading numbered 4698 and ordered published by title only.
motions for approval. All votes cast. That passes six to zero with Ms. Miller being in excused absence. That completes our public hearing for tonight. We have public comment. Again, I see we had a second scout come in the room. We always like to have our scouts come down and give us their name, tell us what badge they're working on and what troop they're with, where they're going to school, things like that.
Hi, my name is Andrew Garcia. I'm with Troop 999 over at Faith. I actually go to Mullin High School. I'll be a junior there in the fall, and I'm working on my citizenship in the community merit badge.
Very good. Well, sorry, we had such a boring meeting for you tonight, other than a great discussions about our wonderful city attorney.
It's okay.
Thanks for being here. Yeah, we feel that way sometimes, too, trust me. Any other member of the public that would like to address city council at this time? Seeing none, I'll close that public comment portion. We'll open it up for some council reports. I know that, Mr. Marriott, you've got some motions to make.
I do. I've got a couple of appointments to make here. I'd start by, I move to appoint Mark Ledford to the Transportation Advisory Committee for an unexpired term ending April 30th, 2021.
motions for appointment to the Transportation Advisory Committee. All votes cast. That passes six to zero. Yes?
Thank you. And I would also like to move, I move to appoint Peter Kazura to the Old Town Business Improvement District for an unexpired term ending April 30th, 2022.
This is for the appointment to the bid, the Business Improvement District. All votes are cast. That passes six to zero. That's based upon a recommendation from the bid board.
Okay. And finally, this is what happens when you're absent. I'm moving to appoint Councilmember Miller to the Arvada Municipal Court Judicial Committee. Let this be a lesson to all of us that if you're absent, you may get appointed to something.
All votes are cast. She'll be serving with Mr. McGough on that. That passes six to zero. Thank you. Mr. Jones?
I just had a real quick update. Next Tuesday, July 23rd, I will be holding a community meeting for District Four, and it will be at the Westwoods Golf Course Community Room at 5:30. So please come and let's talk.
Very good. Ms. Ford?
I wanted to invite District One residents to my meet and greet this Wednesday at Trinity Presbyterian Church from 6:30 to 8:30 PM. Come with questions and comments.
Any other council reports? Seeing none, Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, next Monday will be a workshop. This will focus on the, we will be providing you with a recession plan and updated financial plan information for you to review, and we'll also have an update on the Organized Waste-Hauling Initiative. So that will be an update on the process for the solicitation of bids and other information associated with that. So we look forward to that presentation to you on next Monday, July 22nd.
Very good. And that'll be a workshop in which the city council will be receiving information from our team, particularly as it pertains to the trash hauling question. Council will be asking questions, giving further direction to our team, and then in the future, there will be an opportunity at a public hearing for input from our citizens as well. Mr. Daley? I guess one question that Mr. Pfeifer's asked is, what's our process for appointing a interim city attorney in your absence?
So what will happen is, there will be a resolution approving a contract for the interim city attorney, Rachel Morris, and that will actually appear on the August 5th agenda, but the date of the contract will be the 1st of August because that's when she's going to actually begin. So it'll just be on the agenda, and you'll approve that interim employment agreement.
Go ahead. It was just a procedural question. I didn't mean for the door to hit you or anything like that.
Oh, I know a number of you have been anxious to
No.
...pick a new city attorney, so that's all right. No, but thank you all again. I appreciate it.
Very good. Nothing else to come before the council. We stand adjourned.